Welcome, everyone. I'm Reagan Smith, General Counsel of the United States Copyright Office. We are on day three of our hearings for the Section 1201 rulemaking. This morning's session will concern exemption number 16, which concerns a request with relationship to investigation of the copyright license status. I think many people have heard this before, but not everyone. So just to quickly go through the rules of the road, please assume all of the government side participants have read your submissions. Thank you so much for that. We're going to be asking some questions that try to clarify or hone in on areas of dispute in the record, or perhaps flesh the record out. The roundtables will be moderated by Copyright Office attorneys and Mr. Cheney of NCA. If you can try to use the raise hand button on Zoom. We've realized that's a little bit easier, but you can also wave if for some reason that is not working for you. And we have two sessions today. So for anyone watching in the audience, you can just stay on the link. And after an hour break, we will start the afternoon session. With anyone having technical difficulties, just reach out in the chat or the Q and A, and someone from the Copyright Office will be able to assist you. One more thing, the chat should be circulating a link to a sign up for those who might be interested in participating tomorrow. Our last session is called the Audience Participation Session, where people who are not panelists may participate and share a few minutes of remarks as to any of the proposed exemptions. So I think to begin, we will introduce ourselves on the government side. So if we could please go Mr. Amor, Mr. Bartelt, and Mr. Gray.
Good morning. Kevin Amor, Deputy General Counsel.
Good morning. Nick Bartelt, Attorney Advisor.
Good morning. Mark Gray, also Attorney Advisor.
Mr. Cheney, can you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, and good morning. Stacy Cheney, Office of Chief Counsel at NTIA.
Ms. Chestick, could you please introduce yourself and your affiliate? You know what? I think you're muted.
My apologies. My name is Pamela Chestick of Chestick Legal, and I'm here representing the Software Freedom Conservancy.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers?
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Michael Ayers. I'm here today representing Advanced Access Content System Licensing Administrator LLC, more commonly known as AACSLA, and DVD Copy Control Association, usually referred to as DVD CCA.
Thank you. And Mr. Williams, could you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, good morning. Matthew Williams from Mitchell Silverberg &amp; Nupp. I'm representing the joint creators and copyright owners.
Okay, so thank you. I think I should remind myself, as well as everyone else, to mute yourself if you're not talking and try to speak clearly and slowly for the benefit of the court recorder, since this will be both transcribed as well as live streamed with a recording made online. So I think this morning's session, we're really looking forward to it because we saw the written comments really serve a purpose of narrowing in on areas of potential disputes. So in the reply comment, there were a number of refinements, I think, advanced by the Software Freedom Conservatory. So I just wanted to sort of outline those. So there had been an initial request that this exemption also extends to any activities making lawful use of a computer program, which I think is no longer on the table. And you have signaled a willingness to accommodate limitations suggested by those comments in opposition to clarify that the circumvention should be solely for the purpose of investigating this potentially infringing activity, finding an eligible user to someone who has standing to bring a breach of license claim, and prohibiting circumvention that would constitute a violation of an applicable law. And I'm wondering, maybe to start with Mr. Williams and Mr. Ayers, what are the issues that you see as still on the table to be assessed out? Are there still, as far as those concessions, they resolve your concern with respect to those issues advanced in your written comments? So, Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you. We appreciate the effort by the petitioner to narrow it. I think dropping the, what they referred to as Section B of the proposal was a step in the right direction. I do still have some concerns about the language they've put forward. And of course, we laid out in our written comments what we believe to be alternatives that might obviate the need for any exemption. Some of the specifics related to the new language they put in that I do have some concerns about is currently, they did add that the device or machine on which the program is operating must be lawfully acquired, which is helpful. Depending on the scope of what they're asking for, which I'm not entirely clear on, I think that lawfully acquired language should also relate to the computer programs, not just to the device or machine, such that, you know, the copy they're using to investigate is not an infringing copy or an unlawfully obtained copy. And so that would just be a matter of either repeating the lawfully acquired language or putting it in a different location in the drafting. I think there are other issues, such as, right now, it does say that they would not violate any other applicable law. We had said that, consistent with other exemptions that have been granted in the past, it should also say that it doesn't facilitate infringement. I think does not violate any other applicable law, may encompass that, but given that the other exemptions in the past have said both things, I think that would be an improvement. And again, we're not endorsing granting any exemption, but these are just issues with the language that I still have. One thing that we had suggested is something along the lines of the 117 language that requires restoring the device or the machine or the program to its normal operational functionality after the circumvention is engaged in. I think that that could be helpful. There could be a requirement that the program that's accessed through circumvention be deleted, especially if no infringement is identified, such that, you know, there wouldn't be unintended consequences. And then I also think that there should be, you know, a particularized reason for the circumvention. They say that they get a lot of specific complaints about certain devices or programs, although a lot of those devices or programs are not identified, if any, in the comments. And so I don't think, if you are inclined to grant an exemption, it should be open-ended to say you can circumvent just anything out there to try to decide whether there's infringement. There should be a reason, you know, and I assume when they get complaints, there's a reason someone's observed how something functions and believes that it must infringe their own program, their own open source program, and therefore, they have to investigate. And the way it's phrased, I don't think that's included. So I don't think they should just be allowed to circumvent everything under the sun. I think it should be circumscribed to where they have a particularized reason. And then finally, you know, I do think some of the alternatives we laid out obviate the need for an exemption, but if you don't agree with that, I think they should be incorporated to some degree into any exemption. So there should be steps taken to try to avoid engaging in circumvention before that's done. So if they haven't reached out, for example, to the device manufacturer and said, "We have concerns here," and then been denied access so that they can review the program in an agreed-upon setting, then I don't think there should be an exemption unless they've explored those alternatives.
Okay, thank you. I think next we'll hear from Mr. Ayers and then Ms. Chestick. And again, I think that what we're trying to do is figure out four of these areas where the proposal's been refined, is there some agreement on that? And then we will also go through some of the outstanding issues or the broader sense that there is, you raised a question, whether there's a need for the exemption. So, Mr. Ayers?
Good morning. Thank you. So to just build a little bit on Mr. Williams' comments, I mean, we do have very serious concerns about the very nature of the proposed exemption itself, even with the proposed refinements, which we certainly do appreciate and certainly does demonstrate a willingness to work together, which is absolutely, I agree, the idea that we're trying to promote in this process. I would reiterate that the proposal does not include anything that requires, that has any sort of standard for what level of knowledge of, or suspicion, or reasonable basis there is for believing that there is infringement involved, and that there is no requirement to attempt to contact the firmware or software owner who might be able to get a restraining order to attempt to, or other protection against, depending on the nature of the software that's involved. And just noting that there are rules of civil procedure that do address how evidence is to be made available to the parties in a contract dispute, in a legal dispute. And this proposal, even in its refined form, essentially sidesteps that.
Thank you. So Ms. Chestick, would you like to respond? And I think in particular, I thought three, I'll group it into three buckets of suggestions from commenters for further refinement. I'm wondering if you're open to, one is confirming that the program itself should be lawfully acquired, which might, I guess Mr. Williams suggested, be just a drafting issue, but not sure about that. Secondly, whether there's agreement that the software should not, once access should not be maintained in a way that would facilitate infringement. And I would kind of lump in with whether 117 is helpful, whether there should be a requirement to delete uses when not necessary, that seems to go to the same issue. And third, you know, whether there's some general, you know, requirements to build in as to whether there's a particularized reason to engage in circumvention, including whether that should extend to, you have tried to affirmatively contact or reach out.
Hi, yes, thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's comments, and I'm happy to address them. With respect to whether the program should be lawfully acquired, I, there certainly is no intention to investigate, no interest in investigating infringement of software that is itself infringing, as someone else is right. So I do suspect that that's something that we can just adjust. In drafting, I will say that, you know, our framework, as I'm sure you've all experienced, you know, you write these with a certain framework in mind, and then, you know, that gets refined. So we were certainly thinking more about the embedded situation in hardware devices where, you know, was the situation those would have lawfully acquired software on them. So I think that that's, I agree, I think that's probably just a drafting issue, and certainly no intention to investigate other software. In terms of, in terms of whether or not to destroy the, well, let me just back up and say, I sort of heard two conflicting things from Mr. Williams. One was to say that the device should be restored to its original condition, and then also that the software should be destroyed. So those are inconsistent. I will say with respect to returning the software, the device to its original condition, this is not a repair exemption. This is not, there is, there is no, there is no need, you know, this is not designed to fix the device and return it to a condition where it's still operable. And in fact, as we explained in our brief, sometimes the device has to be destroyed in order to investigate the infringement. So returning it to its original form is not, within the scope of the exemption, not required by the exemption, and yet not even possible. Whether or not to destroy proprietary software, I think that that's a trickier question because, let's take, for example, a device, say there is a Fattbox that has the Linux operating system on it, which is under an open source license and which, you know, may be the software of interest in the investigation. And on top of that, operating system, are some proprietary applications. Well, I don't see anything inconsistent or improper in accessing the Linux operating system, perhaps modifying it to fix a bug or something, reinstalling it, and then reinstalling those proprietary software programs. You had a lawful copy of it. You can restore that to its original operating condition. So I don't, I don't see that as really a necessary or appropriate request for this rulemaking. And I apologize because I didn't get a chance to capture your third question.
Sure. Well, no, I will repeat the third question, and then maybe go back up to what you just said. So I wonder if iterating off what you said, there's other exemptions that the Copyright Office has adopted that include a requirement to sort of maintain the material that has been accessed after circumvention in a safe manner, or use protective measures. And I wonder if that's getting to a thrust of what Mr. Williams was concerned about, whether it is, it doesn't necessarily need to mean applying TPM itself, but if it's not, if it's not useful to say, restore it into the manner in which it was originally accessed, some other way of limiting access or providing a similar sense of security to what I guess the TPM would have been intended, or presumably intended, to be functioning when it was applied. And then the third question was, did you want to speak to the idea that you should have a particularized reason to circumvent in order to probe for the license status investigation, including whether there should be, you know, a suggestion that you should try to affirmatively see if, make contact and see if circumvention is necessary?
Yes. Yeah, so I'm not aware of any other exemptions. First off, this is a very unique exemption, I believe, because what it's, what it does is, it, what is happening here is that the DMCA is protecting the infringer at the expense of the copyright owner, and that is, that is sort of what we were trying to do. So I think that that framework helps things. So are there other exemptions that are similar that we could draw on? I don't, I don't think so, because I think this is such an unusual situation. Another aspect that I tried to make clear in the brief is, this is only about the circumvention itself. So if, and this, and it does happen that proprietary software is accessed in the context of doing an investigation, but it would be unlawful, it would be a copyright infringement for the investigator to do anything with that software outside of the investigation environment. They can't redistribute it. That would be a copyright infringement, and we have no, we have no qualms about saying that would be a copyright infringement to do that. We have, so, so this really is, so I'm a little bit sort of puzzled by the thought that this is not a narrow exception, because it is, it is solely for the purpose of investigating a potential copyright infringement performed at the direction, by a party, performed by or at the direction of a party that has standing to bring a breach of license claim. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty narrow, that's a pretty narrow description of who has, who is entitled to the exercise of this exemption. What I'm, what I'm sort of hearing is, we don't believe you that that's what's going on, and I don't, you know, I don't, I haven't, I have to say, I haven't examined all the other exemptions, but I certainly think that good faith is implied. If the exemption, if the investigation was undertaken for a reason that did not fit this exemption, then of course the exemption wouldn't apply, and there would be liability under the DMCA. So I do think that the, that the restriction is really quite narrowly written for a very specific situation, investigation of infringement. So, and as to the, as to the suggestion that the investigating entities, the copyright owners, first should have a duty to go to the hardware manufacturers or the software manufacturers to ask for a copy, first off, it's, I don't, I would love to know whether other panelists who work in this industry will typically go to an infringer and say, "Gosh, you know, can you, can you give us the proof of your infringement? We really, that would be really useful to us." So I don't, I don't think that that's feasible. And I will tell you also, having, having worked on a number of these cases, that sometimes a bigger stick is needed than going to someone and saying, "Gee, we think that there's something wrong with your software." If you want, there are a couple, I was gonna say, there are a couple, let me, if I could just look at my notes and see if there were a couple other, there were a couple other issues. I think, yes, and, oh, and one, there's only one other point, which is the rules of civil procedure, and that, of course, as we mentioned, there, you know, this, we should not have to go to court to actually file a lawsuit in order to make a determination of whether a device is infringing. I don't, I don't think that anybody takes that position that, you know, you must run to court every time there's an infringement, and that is, you know, that is your first avenue for relief and not other avenues for relief. I think, so I think I've addressed everybody's points with that.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to pull out one thing you said, is that these investigations are undertaken in good faith, and that's the phrase we've used in some other investigations, in other exemptions too, to sort of clarify that. So I think Mr. Cheney wanted to ask a question.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Smith, and thank you for the explanation in the conversation so far. I think this has been helpful. I think for me, and it might be helpful with this whole conversation, to give us a little bit more information about this investigative environment and sort of how this happens. There was a question about a sort of a trigger event, and then how do you acquire the device? How does that investigator acquire that device? Do they go out, purchase the toy, for example? How does that happen? And then what kind of, describe a little bit more about that environment, because I think that might be helpful in, in a couple of those questions about protecting the software that may be exposed after the, after the decryption or the breaking of the TPM. If you could describe that just a little bit more, I think that might be helpful, both on the ownership question and on the, what happens to the device after.
So I will say, without sort of limiting what may happen in the future, I will say that, that at the moment, the infringement actually is so commonplace that, that there are at least, there are two entities who filed briefs, Software Freedom Conservancy and the Free Software Foundation, both of whom tell you that they take reports. So there are people out there in the world who purchase these devices, whether it's television sets, or doorbell cameras, or baby monitors, or whatever it might be, and discover that those devices are not, do not appear to be complying with the open source licenses, with the licenses on the software that they believe is on these devices. And I'll be quite frank, these are fairly sophisticated users of these devices to be able to recognize that situation. So both of these entities, the Free Software Foundation said in its brief that it received about 186 complaints a year. I can tell you, the Conservancy averages around 100 a year, so we have somewhere between 186 and, say, 286 complaints per year, where people have just come to these organizations to say, "Here is a device that I believe is not complying with the open source licenses." That doesn't preclude anyone, any, these agencies from also going out themselves, and they may, in fact, go out and also purchase the device in order to confirm the fact that were given to them. So the investigation is, you know, is done by people associated with these organizations to take various steps, to look at the, look at the device, evaluate the software and various tools they have that I, that I can't disclose, various ways, to get a good sense. And they can, they are very, very sophisticated computer experts who can look at this and tell why they believe that these devices have open source software on them. And we can tell from the documentation, we can tell from looking at the device itself and the documentation on the device, that they are not complying with those licenses, because all of these licenses have a documentation requirement that you will, either, that you can look in the instruction manual, and it will say, "This is the open source software on this device." And so if there's no list at all, and a reasonable, you know, reasonable investigation shows that there is open source software, then we know that there is a license compliance problem. Has that, has that answered your question?
I think so. So there are basically two triggers that you're pointing to. One is somebody comes to you with a complaint. So that's at least one trigger. The other trigger would be that some, there's some indication in something you're reading or otherwise, the investigators then go out and purchase the equipment or the device to then do the further investigation on the device. Is that the two triggers that sort of start your process in the investigation? Is that a good summary of what you said?
I think so. I mean, I would say, so they're not, those, yes, the investigation can arise in two separate ways. Someone reports it, or for some reason, the investigators purchase a device. They aren't going to be motivated to purchase, they generally aren't going to be motivated to purchase a device unless there's been a complaint about it. In other words, you know, they're not going into Best Buy and searching, you know, breaking open all the boxes to see whether or not there's an open source license disclosure in, you know, on all of the instruction manuals. That's, that's not, they generally are only going to purchase a device that, which is already suspected of being out of compliance with the open source license.
So would it be helpful, perhaps, to put in the language of the exemption in your mind to say, to sort of signal what this triggering event is, which is primarily that somebody is filing a complaint? So it could be that the reasonable belief that was talked about early, earlier, is triggered by a complaint received by your organizations. Would that be helpful?
No, 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 I don't think so, because, because I've given you a typical case. I haven't given you every single case. So for example, it was fairly public that Tesla was out of compliance with its open source licenses for its vehicles, and there was a lot of publicity about that. Wouldn't, so that the investigation and work on that problem would not necessarily arise because any individual came and complained about it. It became known, and it became generally known, that Tesla was out of compliance. So, so there may be, and that may be true. So there may be, one, so I'll give you another example, is there has been recent focus on, on baby monitors and internal cameras, because those products are being hacked, and people are taking control of cameras. So that's, that's a huge privacy and security concern. These organizations, these investigative organizations might undertake of their own volition to investigate these devices to see what, to see whether or not there's open source software on them that is being abused improperly for this purpose, or whether, yeah, whether there's open source software being used improperly. So, so the reports are not the only way. I frankly do believe that simply saying, I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding where your qualms are when we say the purpose is for investigation of infringement, and particularly if you say, "Good faith," I'm not sure where your qualms are that that's going to be abused somehow.
Thank you for, thank you for this conversation. And I think that the conversation has to do with, with how this is happening, and perhaps the ownership issues and some of those kind of things, how this process happens. I think it helps build a, an exemption that seems to work. So that's, and I would give an opportunity, I think, to Mr. Ayers, Mr. Williams, perhaps respond to this, if that's okay, Ms. Smith.
Sure. I just, can I ask Ms. Chestick, before we do that, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna see the Copyright Office questioning to Mr. Bartelt. It seems like this exemption is centered around software that has been embedded in a particular machine or device. Is that correct?
That's, that's the most, I would say that's the most common investigation, but, but these organizations do also receive, as we said in our brief, we do also receive complaints about ordinary application software running on computers.
Okay.
We do also receive complaints about those, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I do think a response would be good. Mr. Bartelt, do you wanna?
All right. I think I just wanted to hear, maybe, I don't know, Mr. Williams or Mr. Ayers had other points that they were, wanted to make, but after hearing from Ms. Chestick about but, um, after hearing from Ms. Cheswick about the current process um, for their investigations, I'm curious whether you feel like that's inadequate to form a good faith basis, or if they would, or if something more is needed in your, in your view. Mr. Williams, you could go first, and then, then Mr. Ayers.
Sure, thank you. Um, there's been a number of things said that I'll, I'll try to get to, but I'll start with, with the question you just asked. I think, you know, we assume the good faith of Ms. Cheswick and her organization, and, um, uh, we're not calling that into question. Nevertheless, typically when exemptions are granted, even if that is assumed, uh, or built in, there are other layers of protection that are also added to the language of exemptions to try to curtail any unintended, unintended consequences. Um, and so, uh, you know, the question that came up about, you know, if a complaint is filed uh, and Ms. Cheswick's organization determines that there is a good faith basis because of the complaint to pursue it, um, that would be a more particularized reason to investigate than, uh, just an open-ended standard. I think what she was saying is that she would not want this limited, uh, and it is not as drafted limited to organizations such as her own conducting the circumvention and investigation. Um, and again, although we're not endorsing granting anything, you know, that, that would be a different scenario than, than essentially anyone with, withstanding, which is the way they've, they've drafted it. Um, so, you know, I think what I heard from Ms. Cheswick was if the documentation for a device discloses the use of open source software, uh, that they may not have a reason to investigate, if I followed her, because the disclosure is there, and I assume the attribution that they require is there. Um, uh, but there may be other reasons that they think that the manufacturer is not in compliance with the license. Uh, so I may have misunderstood her, but she said if it's not disclosed in the documentation, um, then they may have a reason to investigate, and I assume that that reason would not just be that there's no disclosure in there, but that there's some functionality of the device or some, uh, uh, operational aspect to the device that they believe requires the use of an open source software program and cannot be somehow reverse engineered or, or done in another fashion through a piece of proprietary software. So I still don't quite understand exactly how they come to the conclusion that the investigation needs to be triggered in, in Mr. Cheney's words, um, but she may be able to speak to that a little bit more. Just to clarify a couple of things, uh, that Ms. Cheswick raised. So when I was talking about the, the need to restore a device to its normal functionality and destroying, uh, any copies that are made, what I was talking about with the destruction aspect is if someone during the investigation creates copies of the program, not the copies that are just inherently embedded in the device, that are running in the device, but create some other copies, and there's no infringement identified. It turns out the investigation doesn't identify any infringement, then those copies should be deleted. And with respect to the restoration of the devices, you know, the concern is, uh, if no infringement is identified, uh, but a device such as a video game console is, uh, opened up, uh, is circumvented, then the proceedings over time have revealed that, uh, harm can result from that. Um, and especially depending on the scope of who's allowed to use this exemption, um, there could end up being devices out there that, that have been, uh, opened up in a way that, that could lead to harmful results. And so there, and that's probably true in other areas, including set-top boxes. And so that's one reason I suggested, even though this is not a repair exemption, that, uh, the notion of restoring the device to normal functionality be included. And, uh, Ms. Cheswick said, well, oftentimes the device has to be destroyed at the end of their investigation. Of course, if that's the case, then that concern is not, uh, is not applicable. Um, if they destroy the device after the investigation, then the unintended consequences, um, may go away. She did mention set-top boxes running Linux and the need to modify them, and whether that's lawful. As I understand it, now that they've changed the language and removed subpart B from the proposal, modification would not be part of this exemption, exemption. So while we may discuss it in other context, I won't, I won't dwell on that. I do think the security is, is a, a good idea if something's going to be granted, to be included, as it has been in other uh, exemptions, um, because again, it's, it's about unintended consequences, and if copies are made, and they are not secured, um, then, then that could lead to, uh, problems, of course. And, you know, I'm, I'm glad to hear her acknowledge that any use outside of the investigation would be infringing. Um, and so, uh, you know, I do think the facilitation of infringement aspect should be incorporated if anything is granted. And then, uh, you know, I would prefer also that nothing other than the computer program that they're investigating be accessed by the circumvention.
Right. Thanks, Mr. Williams. I, and I think, you know, Mr. Ayers, you have maybe similar concerns here about, um, not facilitating access to infringement. I'm wondering, you know, having heard what Ms. Cheswick said about their process, again, if that mitigates any of your concerns, or if maybe there needs to be, um, additional language that should be considered, such as what Mr. Williams is proposing about, you know, not facilitating access to infringement, or that we could borrow from other exemptions, um, to safeguard against, uh, accessing expressive works. Um, and I mean, uh, so please, uh, go, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Bartlett. So the, uh, the situation we have here is, just to make sure it's understood, the, the concern of of the organizations I'm representing is we're not, in, in the case of the unintended consequences that, uh, Mr. Williams has, has mentioned, we're not talking about the, uh, release of a movie, or two movies, or three movies. Uh, we're talking about the potential exposure of the cryptographic values that the software in these devices, uh, controls and protects. Uh, and if these cryptographic values are exposed and disseminated, we've now, uh, exposed every DVD, every Blu-ray disc, uh, to, uh, to piracy, not just, uh, uh, you know, one or two movies at a time. Uh, and so this is, uh, this is a, a big concern to the, the organizations I represent. And while we certainly acknowledge that, um, there is a concern about how is a, uh, an open source software author going to, uh, pursue his or her rights in, in this situation? Uh, I, I think the current proposal shifts the, the, swings the pendulum entirely the opposite direction uh, and puts, uh, uh, the software author in, uh, a position that, uh, other uh, copyright owners would not be in. Certainly, uh, my organizations have, uh, had to follow, uh, uh, legal steps, legal procedures in order to pursue, uh, the circumvention devices and tools that they've pursued over the years. And so I think it is insufficient, uh, to merely say that a report coming in to, uh, to an organization is, uh, is enough to trigger the, uh, the applicability of the exemption. Uh, one thing I would note is in the baby monitor example, uh, if we're talking about sort of what's commonly known, it was, uh, most reports indicate that the hacks, hacks are more due to, uh, users not using, uh, reasonable passwords and, uh, usernames, not so much a circumvention. Uh, and so the, none of the tools have been, none of the cameras have been reset with, uh, with a secure password, and so that's what makes them vulnerable. And so if that's the example, I would certainly hate that sort of approach, uh, to be used in determining whether there's a reasonable basis for engaging in the, uh, in the circumvention that we're talking about here. And I would also note that standing to bring a, a suit is, uh, is, does not really address the merits uh, of the claims that would be in that suit. Uh, and so I certainly think it, it makes sense to, to strengthen the, uh, if we were to grant this at all, and we still, uh, maintain an objection to granting this at all, uh, it certainly makes sense to, uh, bring much more, uh, definition and refinement and specificity to the table.
Yeah. So I wanted to, uh, follow up, but just again, Mr. Ayers, on the, the particular architecture of these, uh, DVD players. And is it, is it the case, um, that circumventing to be able to investigate the firmware would necessarily expose the cryptographic key? That such that it would enable widespread piracy? I think that's what I picked up on from the submissions, but maybe you could explain a little bit more about the particular risk that, um, is unique maybe to DVD and Blu-ray players, and that goes beyond those particular devices. I'd be curious about that, too.
Sure. Uh, so as we explained in, in our submissions, uh, device manufacturers who sign up for a license for either CSS or AACS in making DVD and Blu-ray players, uh, sign on to sets of requirements to protect the cryptographic values, the decryption keys, uh, that they're issued, that allow those discs which are encrypted, uh, to be decrypted by the device and then presented to the user on a, on a screen, um, that's connected to that device. So the, we, while we have requirements for, uh, that apply to, uh, protecting those, uh, cryptographic, cryptographic values, we do leave, uh, a bit of leeway for manufacturers to address it uh, in the way that they, uh, deem most efficient for their manufacturing process, their design process. So not every manufacturer does it in exactly the same way, but the common way is to use the firmware, uh, of the device to protect, uh, to obfuscate or protect those cryptographic values, making them unavailable, uh, to somebody who's attempting to access them by removing the, uh, or circumventing the, the firmware of that device. You arguably then, uh, in many cases, are going to be exposing those keys, uh, to be available in the clear to use for other purposes. They could be extracted from the device, uh, and then incorporated into a circumvention tool.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ayers. Um, Mr. Cheswick, I, I wondered if you had any particular insight about, uh, maybe devices where, again, it provides access to expressive content, whether it's through a cryptographic key, or, um, you know, I don't know, with video, video game consoles, if your organization has investigated open source claims relating to these types of devices? And if, you know, you, you've done the risk or of any sort of, um, uh, remedial measures they've taken to sort of, to safeguard against, um, the, the concerns that Mr. Ayers has.
So, so let me just, um, start by pointing out that, uh, all of this can be avoided if, if these manufacturers simply are in compliance with the license. Um, there will be no investigation. So let's take, let's take the most onerous example, which is a Linux operating system on a device. And under the, um, the license that applies to the Linux operating system, you have to provide a copy of the source code. Um, you have to either make it available with the device, or you have to put in your documentation where a copy can be obtained. So, um, someone can just write to you and you provide the source code. And quite frankly, this is sort of the biggest, um, non-compliance, the license, non-licensed compliance that we see is this, is this failure to provide source code. It's a clear requirement of the license. If they were to simply meet their license obligations, which means they are non-infringing, um, there would be no investigation of the device. There, there would be no exploration of it. Um, so, so to say, uh, we're going to, you know, there's this risk of exposing cryptographic keys, it's a risk that they brought on themselves by, um, by infringing.
Can I just interrupt for, for one second and make sure I understand the supply chain, right? So that, so the people that you want, who say are obligated to provide source code and are not, those are not Mr. Ayers' client, clients, right? So Mr. Ayers is concerned that, or, or they are?
They are his clients. Yes, everybody in the distribution chain has that obligation, has that legal obligation. So, and then think of it.
I think, uh, the confusion, just a second, the confusion I had is he was saying that he gives many, their, his clients give manufacturers flexibility to determine how to impose things. So I was trying to figure out whether it is the manufacturers that you're investigating, or whether it is AACS, for example. And I mean, if, if, if you both wanted to speak to that just very briefly, I just want to make sure I, I have the right answer.
Sure. I, I, let me, let me, uh, address that. So I, I do apologize for a little confusion over who's who here. Um, so it is the manufacturers themselves who, it is not that, or it is not the AACS organization that, that, that it is, we're concerned about with infringement. It is the manufacturers. So it's those manufacturers who need to be compliant. But as Mr. Ayers pointed out, there are ways for these manufacturers to, to build their devices so that these cryptographic keys are not exposed. So, um, so the fact, so we have, it, it's sort of a double layer. Sort of first off, the manufacturers, um, can avoid all problems by simply being compliant with the license, by being, not being infringers. Secondly, they can manufacture their devices in ways that allow the cryptographic, so that, that will not expose the cryptographic keys um, on these investigations. They may have chosen a different way, which does expose them. But again, that was, that was a design choice they made, knowing that they, that they have this obligation to provide source code. So, um, I, so they're, um, to sort of put, uh, put the investigators in handcuffs because of design choices and software choices that the manufacturers made, uh, seems to be an incorrect balance when we're talking about who the, who the, um, wrongdoing party is here. And it is not the investigator who is the wrongdoing party. It's the manufacturer. I do just, while I have the mic, um, I do just want to say that also there are many, many individuals who do the same kind of work. We focused on, my client is Conservancy, that is the one, so that is the one I'm focused on, Free Software Foundation. But there are also many, many individuals who are pursuing this, um, themselves. So it would be inappropriate to try to limit this exemption to, uh, organizational units that are doing this kind of work, because many, because there are individuals doing it also.
Can I just follow up on that, Ms. Cheswick? So, um, you know, you, you talked about how the manufacturers, you know, have some control over this investigation insofar as they control, you know, whether they're complying with the license terms. And I think that gets back to the question of, okay, you know, what should the standard be in terms of, you know, when, what, what sort of level of knowledge or good faith belief should be required in order for, you know, for this exemption to apply? So I, I was curious, I mean, you've, you framed the language in terms of standing, which I gather means, you know, it, it has to be undertaken by someone who is either the copyright owner or a licensee of the copyright owner to, um, you know, who, who would have standing either to enforce the license or, or to bring an infringement claim. Is that sort of what was intended?
Yes, yeah. So the, the, that restriction was added, again, to sort of, uh, address the concern that there would be uh, those who would take advantage, uh, try to take advantage of this exemption and just start hacking on devices to see what's going on. It has to be someone, because it is for purposes of potentially bringing an infringement claim, that it, then we believe it's appropriate to limit it to those people who would have the ability to bring that claim, someone who has standing for that claim.
Okay. And so I think, so then one of the concerns that I think we've also heard is that should, is the question of whether there should be some standard of knowledge or good faith belief in addition to that, um, you know, and this goes to your point about, you know, I think, it, it goes to the concern, I think, about whether, you know, this could give rise to just sort of why, you know, and, and I realize your, your clients probably are not going to be interested in doing this unless they do have some basis for concluding that, that, uh, a licensing breach has occurred. But I, I wonder if, if it, if you would be open to the idea of including some sort of additional language in addition to the standing language that would sort of refer to, you know, uh, some reasonable basis for believing that an infringement or a, a, a breach of license has occurred.
Yes. If I could just go back to address some of the, some of the earlier points that were made when we're talking, when I was explaining sort of what this process is. So, um, as I said, the, the absence of, of something in the documentation is a red flag that there probably is, um, non-licensed, non-compliance. And the question was raised, um, you know, is there a second step, which, which is functionality? Is there some functionality? So, um, uh, we, we know that, um, of the devices that we've, that we've sampled in sort of the smart device market, all of these, you know, internet of things that we're talking about, that ninety percent of those run on Linux. So just as a matter of sort of, you know, the overall industry, we do know that license of that software under the general public license version two is on these devices. Um, so there's sort of, you know, that, so sometimes, I'm, what I'm, I guess, a lot of times there are techniques that can also be used in looking at the device and evaluating it and, and running some tests on it and, and checking it in certain ways. Um, certainly my client, um, would like to have much more information than simply, um, probably there's, you know, probably there's Linux on it before going to manufacturing and, and making an allegation. making an allegation that they're out of compliance. So, and that's kind of, we have a kind of a chicken and egg problem here, which is, you're saying, you're saying, well, we, we need you to have particularized knowledge that there's, that there's infringement going on here, but that's exactly what we need the exemption for, is in order to gain that particularized knowledge. We have general knowledge that it's going to be highly likely based on circumstantial evidence that we're seeing on it. And we do like to have, but we do like to have a much better level of, of, of evidence than that before approaching a manufacturer to accuse them of infringement. We don't want to accuse anybody wrongly of there, that there's infringement going on. So, so I think that's, that's the, you know, that's sort of the rock and the hard place that, that we're between is if you, if you set too high a level, if you, if you try to, you know, and, and the other thing is, is that there are a lot of different indications, there are a lot of different things that they can see happening that may indicate, you know, what kind of software is on the device. So it's, I, I can't think of any sort of reasonable place to draw a line that says, you know, you have to meet X level of proof in order to then be able to open up, to crack open the device lawfully and get, you know, the next quantum of proof. I mean, 90% of the market, I think, that's a pretty good level of, you know, pretty good, a pretty good guess that there's going to be, that there's going to be the Linux software on there and, you know, and then it will depend on, you know, what's going on, if, whether or not that's an infringing use or a lawful use.
What about something like a reasonable good faith belief?
Yes. I, I think that, I think we would be comfortable with anything that, that is a generalized standard, reasonable good faith belief, yes. Because certainly that is my client's present, present standard is, you know, they, they, they don't investigate frivolous complaints. They, they certainly always have a reasonable good faith belief that there is infringement going on. Because, you know, this is, this is frankly, a lot of work to do these investigations. It's many, many hours of work, so they don't, they don't pursue it, you know, sort of lightly.
Just wanted to jump in to ask a question. There, there was one thing that was raised in the reply comments about where the Software Freedom Conservancy seemed open to limiting the investigation of instances of false software. I see, you have your hand raised, Mr. Williams. I'm just curious if that is a limitation that would make any difference to if it should be allowed, people using this exemption or potential users could be investigating infringement of proprietary software or false software? I don't know if your organization has a view on that? And then I think maybe you wanted to reply to some of the remarks we just heard.
Sure, thank you. Yes, I mean, I'm always a fan in these proceedings of trying to keep the exemptions tailored to the record that's been built. And this one has been exclusively focused, I believe, on open source software. And so if there's an exemption granted, I think it should be limited to that context. I do understand some of the other comments that say, well, that would create an unequal standard between proprietary software and open source, but I don't think there's been a record built on the proprietary side. So, and it sounded like Ms. Chestwick's organization would be amenable to limiting it to open source. So on that question, I think from our point of view, although, like I said, we don't think an exemption is necessary. If one's granted, I would rather keep it limited to that context. To respond to some of what Ms. Chestwick was just saying, it, it sounds like in a lot of these instances, she's saying they know that Linux is running and, for example, someone has not yet published the rest of their proprietary source code along with the Linux code that they believe is being run and that that's a violation of the Linux license. And if they know already, that seems to get rid of the need for circumvention. And, and so I'm a little, I'm still struggling a little bit to understand that issue. And then I'm also curious to know how they are aware that 90% of a given market is running Linux, if that hasn't been disclosed or there haven't already been investigations of all of these devices? But again, if they know that devices are running it, the investigation isn't, the circumvention to investigate isn't necessary. They already have everything they need to move forward with the complaint. And she mentioned earlier that, you know, it's uncommon in other spaces for people to, you know, get all of their evidence from the infringer in advance, but that certainly doesn't stop people from filing lawsuits based on good faith belief and Rule 11 and then getting what they need through discovery. And I do think that going to a manufacturer and saying, hey, we think there's a problem here, are you willing to give us access to your code? That, 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 that doesn't seem like it should be a big hindrance to the process because they would already be in possession of the device. And if, you know, the, the infringer somehow tried to cover its tracks, which I don't know exactly how that would work, but if they did, they would already have the device in their hands. And so I don't think the evidence would disappear. I do want to be specific about kind of video game consoles, just because there's been a lot of talk about smart devices here and maybe there's more evidence with respect to those devices. But video game consoles were kind of grouped into a long list in the opening comments of devices, but there were no specifics provided about which consoles or why there was any belief that they were not complying with some open source licenses. And, you know, with video game consoles, going back to your question about does getting access to the firmware undermine the security of the devices that Mr. Ayers addressed for his clients? We do have a record and a long history of establishing that that is the case with video game consoles. And so I, I would ask that they be excluded if this exemption is, is granted because Ms. Chestwick said, well, there's, there's an obligation on manufacturers to somehow separate and create all these different layers of access controls in order to enable the investigation without otherwise undermining the, the effectiveness of the security scheme that's designed to prevent piracy and other unauthorized access. And that really assumes infringement by the people that she's intending to investigate. And that, to me, isn't correct. You can't just assume that every device manufacturer is an infringer and therefore is obligated to separate these two types of access controls. So that's, I think, everything I wanted to address for now.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Maybe I could kind of turn those questions back to Ms. Chestwick for a minute, just to get a little bit more clarity about, right, where maybe your, your, the Conservancy is able to, without circumventing TPMs, determine that there is, you know, false within most devices, how often they run into issues where they are impeded from doing so by, for one reason or another, particularly for, by TPMs? And then if you have examples of where maybe complaints have been made in, concerning video game consoles, that would be helpful to know.
I don't have any specifics on the video game consoles. I do, what I, I do just feel the need to reiterate, which is that the device manufacturers are using the software with full knowledge of the license requirements for it. And so to say, if you want to catch us, you, you shouldn't be allowed to catch us at infringement because of design choices we have made, I, I, I don't have a lot of sympathy for that, for that argument. And then with, and I'm sorry, I got sidetracked. And if you could just repeat your actual question that I took a tangent from.
No worries. I, I think where Mr. Williams was, 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 he was saying in, in referring to your earlier comments that often you're able to, your, the Conservancy is able to identify that Linux is being used or you have knowledge about, that in 90% of the cases, I'm sorry if I'm getting the statistics wrong, that you, you're aware that it's there. So maybe that circumvention is not needed. And I'm just curious if you could provide a little bit more insight about how often you, you're actually prohibited from being able to make that evaluation by TPMs or by some other mean?
Yes. So it's, it's kind of a delicate question because, you know, you know, do we, do we admit, do we want to say that we have, we have had to bypass TPMs in order to discover infringement when at the moment there's no exemption for it? You know, I, I think that there's, what, what the effort here is to try to draw a line where there's just no way to draw a line, which is to say, you have to have, you know, or, or, what I'm hearing is, is an attempt to have it both ways, which is to say, well, you already know, so you don't need the exemption, but then, but we don't have enough information to know whether or not there is software on the device if we just, you know, if it's, say, for example, just this generalized knowledge of, you know, that, say, I'll give you, I'll give you an example. So they, say there's a television manufacturer that has, that, that you have a report and you've investigated and have determined that they likely, that there likely is Linux running on that device and they're out of compliance with that license. Is it safe, is it safe for you, you know, is it, where do you draw the line between saying, okay, well, is it safe, is it fair for me to assume that every, that every television manufactured by this television manufacturer is also infringing or not? Or should I do investigation on that? So, you know, to...
Well, can I, what is your practice right now? Because it's, it seems like just putting on like a litigation hat or a negotiation hat. You can say, we have a reasonable belief that you're using Linux and we see that you haven't disclosed your source code, so please comply. And they can respond or not. And if you need to, you can go into court and, you know, no one wants to go into court unless you have to go into court. But, but how do you handle this now? Do you conduct a forensic analysis before sending these letters out? And if so, why?
Yes, yes. Generally, they do, they do perform a significant analysis so that there is enough evidence when we go to the manufacturers that, that the, that the manufacturers can, just simply cannot deny, that we have, you know, very firm evidence that the software is on the devices. And, and, and let me also point out, I think what's really important to understand here, too, is that the Software Freedom Conservancy and the Free Software Foundation, the two organizations I mentioned before, have published standards for enforcement of these licenses. And the first step on these standards is to work with the manufacturer to try to gain compliance. These organizations are not, they're not, their first step is not going to court. So to say, oh, well, you, you know, you can go to court and get discovery, that's, that's fairly antithetical to the published standards they have for the ways they do enforcement.
Sure. But I guess I'll put my old, like, trademark enforcement hat on where you might not know exactly what a user is doing, but you sort of see something in the market that you, you might, you might start by approaching them. Do you, do you start those conversations with manufacturers saying, we think you're using Linux? Or do your standards say that you need to have, like, documentary evidence before sending a letter? What do the standards say?
I don't believe that these community standards that I'm talking about go, go into that kind of detail. I can share with you as, you know, as, as a, as a litigator, what you try to do is develop the best case you have that you can get against your opponent so that, because, you know, if you go with inadequate evidence, they're going to deny, they're going to deny it. And so, you know, you always want to go to them with the, with fairly compelling evidence and you're going to achieve success, you're going to achieve licensed compliance and non-infringement by going to them with the most compelling evidence that you can go to them with, rather than this sort of shady allegations. If I went to, say, a doorbell manufacturer and said, you know, 90% of the doorbells manufactured have Linux on them, based on that, we think that you might have Linux too. Well, that's, you know, they're, they're not gonna, they're, they're gonna, that, that letter's going into the circular file when we say that. So, you know, we may, we need those tools to be able...
Has that happened in your experience? Have people not responded to your letters when you haven't had documentary evidence?
I, I don't know that we've ever gone to anyone without documentary evidence. So as I, as I said before, we prefer to go to them with, with fairly compelling. But, but what, but what may be happening, though, is, is that those people against whom we have evidence are the ones who are not, maybe not using TPM so that we can prove that, which means that you have a whole group of infringers who are able to protect their infringement and, and, and protect it lawfully by, by being able to allege a claim of 1201 by simply incorporating a TPM. So, you know, you're kind of tipping the scales in favor of the infringers by, you know, requiring this sort of very high degree of, of evidence that there's infringement going on.
Okay. So just one last question before, before I turn over the mic. Are the standards for enforcement, is that in our record yet? Has that been provided?
They were, they were cited in a footnote. It's more a community, it's more, it's not sort of, it's more like, we're good guys and we will write to you. We're not going to see you out of the box. We're going to write to you and try to fix this.
Okay. But we have that.
I'm happy, I'm happy, I'm happy to provide them this. I'm happy to provide a copy if you'd like me to provide a copy.
Okay. We will be in touch if we think we need that.
Okay.
Ms. Chestwick, could I, could I ask you one other question about the language as you've, the, the proposed language as you've drafted it? So the, the language talks about circumvention, it talks about both copyright infringement and breach of license claims, which are two, you know, separate types of causes of action. It sounds like we're talking about potentially both. I, I mean, as I understand it, in some cases, when a license is breached, there will be a cause of action for copyright infringement, but not always. It depends, you know, on whether the, the license term is a condition or a covenant. I'm thinking of the MDY case in the Ninth Circuit, which talks about this. I was wondering if that is by design that you've sort of, that the proposed language talks about standing to bring a breach of license claim as opposed to standing to bring a breach of license or an infringement claim?
So that's certainly a question only a copyright lawyer would love. And actually, the breach of license, the language breach of license was meant to, and excuse my cat there, was meant to, his tail may flop here in a second, yeah. May, it was meant to actually include both, whether it was a breach of contract, that's why I said breach of license was trying to play it both ways, was whether it's a breach of contract or whether it's a copyright infringement, the exemption was meant to cover both of those situations, yeah, standing for either one of those types of claims.
Okay. Thank you.
I realize that, you know, in addition to the, you know, the comments that are here with the same Mr. Williams and Mr. Ayers, you didn't file anything specific to vehicles, but I just wanted to raise the issue because they're, they're not with us here today. If you had any view on whether the amended language prohibiting circumvention that would constitute a violation of applicable law, Satisfactory really addresses those concerns about vehicles and vehicle safety and protection of trade secrets. If you have any views on those, I appreciate it. If not, can move on. All right. I think we've given that adequate time. I'm just looking through my notes to see if we have any additional questions of, think of issues we haven't covered. I don't know, Reagan or Kevin, Mr. Cheney, if you have anything you wanted to raise yet in the remaining five minutes we have.
I think that maybe, well, we're checking our notes if anyone wants to, you know, have any last thoughts, you as a panelist. I don't, go ahead. I think, Ms. Chestwick, you've unmuted and Mr. Williams, you have your hands raised. So let's go in that order.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, one thing that we didn't, that sort of was mentioned, was whether or not all software should be included in this exemption or just free and open source software should be included in this exemption. And as we, as we stated, I don't under, I don't know any reason why it shouldn't be all software, because I, I believe that it's to the benefit of the owners of copyrights and proprietary software to include this also. I don't understand why they wouldn't want, want this exemption in their favor. It simply is the case, however, that my client only investigates free and open source software, so we only have the factual predicate that's required for the exemption for purposes of free and open source software. But, but nevertheless, believe that it's, that it would be valuable to all copyright owners. believe that it's, that it would be valuable to all copyright owners.
This, this might be a little out there. I'll let Mr. Williams try it in a second. Are you aware, Ms. Chestick, of any particular types of devices that would never include free and open source software? Or, I mean, it's so pervasive nowadays. I just, I'd assume that we find it everywhere. But I don't know if there are, I mean, if others on the panel are aware of particular types of devices that would, you know, exclude that or never include that. I, we'd be curious to know that as well.
I, in terms of, I believe I gave a statistic that, that, that studies have shown that all software kind of across all, all fields, firmware, you know, laptop software, all kinds of software, that something like 99% of it has open source software. So it certainly, it certainly exists everywhere. There, you know, yes, there are devices that don't have open source software. It's become a more popular way, it's become a much more popular way to build software because there are all of these pre-existing components that can be quickly assembled to create. And, and they also, a lot of them tend to be at the, at the operating system level, within the stack, not the, not the application layer itself, but within the stack, that's, a lot of that is open source software. And so it's very easy. And that's sort of, you know, it's, it's, it's nothing special about it. It's infrastructure. You're not, you know, you're not, your business is not succeeding on, on, you know, what's the operating system on your doorbell camera? That's not where you're making your money. So these softwares do tend to be used quite frequently.
Thank you. And I think, Mr. Williams, we had you next. Then, Mr. Cheney, if you had a question after that.
Thank you. Yeah, just very quickly, I was going to say, I think it's, it's great that, that their standards for pursuing potential claims include first contacting the manufacturer before moving on to litigation. And that, I think their stated objectives is, are not to, you know, go out and obtain as many infringement lawsuit winnings as they can, but to ask for compliance with license terms. And I think that if, at least in my litigation practice, potential defendants, if they were told upfront that litigation was not the ultimate objective, damages was not the ultimate objective, as long as some form of cooperation and ultimate willingness to comply was pursued by the potential defendant, I think that would make it all the more likely that they could cooperate with people to find out, is there actually infringement here or not? And that's one reason why we had suggested some of the things we did to limit the exemption to require reaching out to the copyright owners first.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Cheney?
Thank you for the last couple of seconds here. I just have a quick question. Ms. Chestick, you can help me perhaps. You had mentioned that you wanted to move beyond just your two organizations or other organizations that are similarly situated to perhaps individuals that conduct this, these investigations. Can you tell us whether those investigators have particular trainings or certifications that, that go towards qualifying them for this, that may be in those community standards or other locations that might help us in understanding how to perhaps cabin this for particular individuals? Can you help us there?
No, there, I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of any sort of certification in circumventing TPM. They, I will say, so as, as pointed out, this exemption is sought for copyright owners. So the reason that these individuals take interest in, in the question is, they have, for example, contributed to a piece of software that is found on these devices, and, or they suspect that it is, and they want to confirm for themselves. And, and let's keep in mind what the, what the trade off here is for the people who create open source software. They, particularly the copyleft software, is their, their motive for participating and for putting software on these licenses is that the software is freely available to everyone to share. So when they see that their software that is under this license, that is meant to be shared by the commons, is not being shared by an entity, then they take, you know, they take particular offense at that. So they certainly are knowledgeable about the software that is, the software itself that's being investigated because they're an author of it. So they know very well how that software works, what to look for, what kind of indications there are that the software is, much better than, than, certainly me, because I don't have the background, perhaps even much better than my client. Because, you know, if they wrote, for example, a piece of the software that communicates in a particular way, when they see a thermostat communicating in that, with that particular signature, they may recognize that and say, I know exactly what that is. That's my software that's doing that. So that, so, so that, you know, that may be another way that someone will have sort of particularized knowledge, or will have a suspicion, let me put it that way, have a suspicion, is the signature enough to go after someone and say, I saw this signature, I think you're infringing my software. You know, I suspect, you know, that's another letter that's going to go into a lot of circular files. So, so that's, but that's the kind of, that's sort of the level we're talking about is, you know, there's the level of suspicion, which is what would cause someone to investigate. But then there's a level of evidence that is sufficient, that when you go to someone with that evidence, that you then, you know, that, that they will then have reason to engage with you because they realize that they are caught out as being a copyright infringer. If they aren't caught out, and I will want to, I will want to, I do want to point out that when, when my client sends out letters to companies saying that the infringe, the software is infringing, very, very, it's much, it's much less common to receive a response than it is to get no response. Very often, even with this evidence, these companies are ignoring these, you know, this, these letters alleging that there's infringement. So that's, so that's sort of, it would be a wonderful world if we, if we could just simply go to a manufacturer and say, gee, we realize, you know, gee, we think there's a problem here. And the manufacturer would say, oh, my gosh, we're, we're terribly sorry. We didn't realize. Let's fix it right away. I mean, we would, you know, we'd be clapping each other on the back if we had, if we, if that was the response. But that is not the typical response. The typical response is to duck, cover, and ignore.
Can I, one, like, maybe final question on that, because it does seem like you're focused on getting the manufacturer to respond to you based on the open source license they may have obtained. And Mr. Ayers is focused on getting the manufacturer to comply with the restrictions to protect information based on those relationships. And so there's sort of like the shared target. If you reach out to the manufacturer and you say, if we don't get a response, we are going to engage in circumvention, which has been going to maybe jeopardize some of the other relationships the manufacturer does, do you think that's going to help it not go into the circular file, the letter?
With, I guess, I guess I'm missing a piece of the question because we, yeah, not without, if there's, if there's no exemption, no, they'll be thrilled to death because then they, yeah.
No, no, I think assume, assume that there was an exemption, and I guess that the exemption, you know, either requires you to reach out to the manufacturer first, or you just decide to do it. I'm wondering, it, it seems like the manufacturer probably doesn't want their device to be circumvented either. So that might serve as, could that serve as a carrot? Or I don't know about it's a carrot or stick. Could that serve as an incentive for them to respond to you?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a novel thought. I have, I have not, so you're saying if a condition of the exemption was to say, but first you have to ask, and you have to get, I guess, first you have to ask, then what? I mean, it's sort of, it's part of the problem with these exemptions is they, they become this sort of whole, like, you know, they grow and grow and grow, as you try to add these, these things. So if, if, say, say you said, yes, you have to write to them first, and then if they don't comply, then you, then you're allowed to circumvent. You know, would the ones with cryptographic keys be, be more amenable? I mean, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I can't speculate because it's just, I don't, I can't think and talk at the same time. So.
Okay. Well, well, thank you. Thank you for entertaining me. I mean, and I agree, if we were to recommend an exemption, we don't have any desire to make these overly complicated. But given that open source software and software generally is a more complex area, I think we want to make sure we would carefully consider all the angles for these types of users. Does anyone else have any more questions or, or any more statements they would like to get on the record? Okay. So we're a little over time, or, yep?
I'm sorry, just one, just one real quick comment. I guess this sort of letter, you know, letter first, then you get the exemption. Just, I, I don't know whether that might encourage sort of sending frivolous letters to, like, there is, there is a problem in this industry with, with trolls, who people, there's some very famous individuals who use open source software as a trolling mechanism to gain income. And so sending out, making it as easy as, you know, sending out a letter and threatening might, might encourage those trolls to act in malicious ways. So I guess that's, that's my kind of hesitation about, about sending out these. Because it, you know, then it becomes this sort of, yeah, I mean, it gives someone a mechanism, you know, just like patent trolls send out letters, you know, threatening infringement on the barest of circumstances. I, that's my, that's my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. I think that concludes this session. We will come back in 40 minutes, where we will examine proposed exemptions to permit text and data mining. And thank you all for your contributions this morning. If you are watching, you can just stay, stay on the line, and we will be back. And if you are a panelist, just mute yourself and turn off your audio, because you will have a live mic. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the time.